Okay, now being six o'clock, I will call the Monday, December 17th, order selection meeting to order. This meeting is being recorded for cable cast and YouTube presentation by Area 58 Community Access Media. The video of this meeting is not to be considered an official public record. The first item on the agenda is the moratorium update and discussion of next day's steps on the marijuana bylaw.
Okay.
Would you like to? I saw your letter, Deb. I thought that was good. Did you get a chance to see it?
I did. I absolutely love it and I'm really thrilled that it's written and thought it's well-written and really think it's the exact right thing to do.
Is that it? Can you take a peek?
Sure.
Yeah, I didn't get a chance to read it.
Assuming, you know, we send the letter. If they just say, "Well, tough," what's our next step?
Well, then it goes back to town council.
Okay.
And I would assume that it, then I would request that it go back to town council and have town council who approved the bylaw as submitted to town meeting where it was unanimously voted. Town council aided in writing the bylaw as I understand it. They need to deal with the attorney general and argue our cause.
You okay? Everybody, yeah, makes sense to me.
Yep.
Okay.
Because no matter what we do right now, if we were to say, "Okay, so sorry," and then try to rush through and get an article put together by the time we have hearings and then call and spend the special town meeting, then...
It'd be May anyways. Yeah, yeah, I agree.
And we've left ourselves wide open all that time. I feel that the downside of, or the effect of what the attorney general has done is vastly more than it should have been. There was no word from town council, who probably had no word from the attorney general, but maybe he did, I don't know. There was no word from them that there was any kind of time limit.
Right.
We knew that we were going to present something for the spring town meeting and...
I never saw anything in writing until it appeared in the paper, which doesn't seem to be the way the state should deal with us.
True, true. I don't think that they should have, like, let us up to try like that.
Any questions, comments?
My only concern is that it kind of has a negative tone about marijuana. And I would suggest just making it more that, you know, we need to find how this will be appropriate in the town of Plimpton rather than...
But we're working on that now.
I know, but the letter makes it seem like you've, which they have, they've kind of stuck it to us, but I don't know, with no defense against marijuana operation, I just think that might be, have negative connotations.
You're correct. With no defense against where a marijuana operation can be...
Well, appropriate placement, I would say, with no defense against appropriate placement. So just little minor wordsmithing, I think that would be beautiful.
No.
Just because we're not looking at this point, we know what's going to happen with it.
We want to be able to decide where it's appropriate in the town of Plimpton.
Right, I agree, yes. I think that's beautiful. Perfect, I think that's great.
Great, thanks.
Awesome. Thanks, Deb.
Thank you, Diva.
Good luck. This is...
As soon as you hear back, you'll let us know, I assume.
Yeah, we probably won't find out through letter from the attorney general.
No?
Hopefully, we hear from you first, yeah.
We do have to turn the heat up on our lawyers.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. So is Copeland Page going to somehow be involved in this as well? Maybe you'll just copy them in it so they know that we're...
I'll copy them on it just simply so they know.
Perfect, yeah. Because they may have some dialogue with the AG before we do. Awesome, great. Thanks, Deb.
Thank you.
Great job.
Thank you, Diva. You're welcome to stay in this exciting meeting we're having. I see you got your cracker in order here, so where are we?
Can we offer you a cookie?
They're beautiful. Thank you so much.
Next is policy and procedure for disposition of town-owned land. So where are we on that?
So I had sent around those draft documents and we were waiting to see if there was input, if people generally liked that format. That was meant to be the internal process, so the external process is what it is, which I was hoping for something a little bit more detailed as far as whatever it was that Colleen and attorney Bowen came up with, something a little more user-friendly to kind of walk us through. But nonetheless, I believe that process is dictated by Mass General law and it is what it is.
True.
But for us internally, I think the question is how do we decide if we're even interested in selling a piece of town-owned land? And I think something like this might be a starting point.
I agree. I think I would just consider adding recreation committee or commission.
Oh, that's a good one.
Good.
But that looks nice to me.
I'm really glad there's a policy moving forward because we get requests and I think this gives us direction on how to deal with it and I'm thrilled that we have it.
Well, yeah, I agree. We need to take the ambiguity out of it and that every request is treated the same. It's just, you know, there's a process and...
And then I guess the only question will be when the once-a-year is that we review?
We should probably pick a time during the year. I think first I should speak to Colleen and figure out how this might play into the larger external process that takes place for actually selling off the land. And we might want to pick something that works with our schedules as far as not at a peak time, say like, well, we're in the middle of budgets or something like that. Pick kind of an off time where people can put the thought into it.
Yeah, we almost need a workshop to just talk about, you know, big lots versus little lots, some landlocked versus ones that are on the street.
Did I hear perk chart?
Excuse me?
Did I hear perk chart?
Perk.
Perk?
Oh, perk. I heard perk chart in my ears. I'm excited there.
No charts tonight.
Yeah, no charts.
No charts today. But the other thing that comes up should, as part of this, should we notify abutters automatically when we're going through a land disposition? It seems to me we probably should.
If we're selling it?
Yeah.
I would probably, I mean, it might be a good idea too.
Yeah.
Although not required, or if it is required...
As a courtesy?
I was going to say, on the one hand, you could defer to Colleen and the process that's in place, the legal process for it.
I agree.
It might be a nice thing to do.
I agree.
To let people know, although we have to be consistent. If we're going to do that, we need to determine, is it all abutters within 100 feet of the property lines?
Or just direct abutters?
Are we counting across the street?
Right.
Is it direct? Just so that somebody doesn't, in the future, say, "Well, wait a minute, I wasn't notified, but for this other one..."
Right. So that's what I'd like to maybe spend another meeting time workshopping how we approach it. And maybe get some legal, you know, maybe there's some legal issue. We want to make sure we don't do anything that's going to get us in trouble later.
So we could pursue that. I also think Bree and I were working on trying to get kind of a standard form letter. We sort of started the process when Mr. Norrie inquired about his piece, but making sure that we have a consistent response when somebody from town sends us a letter that says, "Oh, I noticed that the town owns this parcel and I'd like to buy it," so that they're getting a consistent message. We have a policy in place, this is the policy, maybe we could even send them the policy. Or once we iron it out a little bit better and we know when during the year, so that we're giving them a timeline. And if at that time we go through this process and we're selling it, then we'll notify you and if not, then we can notify you of that as well.
So is this something we should do in the next 45 days?
In terms of finalizing the policy?
Of just workshopping what our questions are. So we come up with something a little more definitive. When I've talked to Colleen, she's indicated that the auction would probably take place sometime in the summer. I think she has like a six-month window.
So we could work back from that. I mean, I could talk to her as soon as tomorrow.
Could you?
Kind of work backwards from that and come up with a logical point in which we would send the information about said land around to these different entities. And I think we would have to give them enough time to respond that these boards would have time to convene a meeting.
Right.
But not so much time that it's kind of languishes.
But I'm thinking almost before that, before it goes out to the other boards, that we have a meeting to just hash out sort of what our guidance is.
Well, yes, and that will, that's provided for, I believe, in there.
Yeah, that once a year we'll review?
Once a year, we would review at a public meeting and then send the information about the land. And that information can be whatever we want. It could be as simple as a list from Colleen, or we might want to pull for certain parcels the assessor's cards.
So is that before or after the review by the boards?
Before.
Okay, so that's the meeting I'm asking for. When should we do that?
I think that I should work with Colleen and kind of count backwards from when she would be doing any type of auction and see when it makes sense to do that.
Okay.
Like, I don't want to say, "Oh, we'll do it every May," and then she says, "Well, that doesn't work because I would typically do an auction in July and I need X amount of time." So I just want to bounce off of her.
I'm more interested in getting the first one going because we've had lots of requests from people.
We have.
And I wonder if town council shouldn't review this document.
That might be a good idea, just to make sure that it matches up.
That we're heading in the right direction, yeah.
Yeah, makes sense.
Would you want KP to review it or would you want Rich Bowen to review it whereas he's been working on it?
I would think KP, since if we get into issues down the road...
They're the ones that are going to have to be helping us, right. Does Colleen require any approval from town meeting to sell property?
I believe she does, yes, as part of her process.
So we would need to do this before the cutoff for town meeting?
Correct.
Okay.
And we'd have to make sure too that it was, that it aligned with all of her advertising dates and everything.
Okay.
Because it's a very particular process.
Okay, so this really would have to be completed well before April, really, April, May?
I would imagine so.
Is that when the warrant closes?
I would imagine so.
Okay. So this might even be like a fall project.
I was wondering if it would end up being kind of like a fall-winter project for us and then set the stage so that the...
For next year, you mean?
Just generally speaking, going forward, if she needs town meeting approval and depending on...
That everything has to be done by April, then we really would need to work on this in the fall-winter.
But I don't know, maybe she'll say, you know, something different.
Okay.
All right.
Nice. Okay.
License for renewal, Bree.
Yes, we do. So what I'm doing, this one, John, if you want to leave them off.
Okay, so the first one is Just Write Farm?
Yes, it's the titles of the common fix would be Just Write.
Okay, do we have something we have to sign?
I just got this, but if you can approve it, then it can get signed later, that's fine for the Just Write one.
Okay, sure.
I have all the documents.
Hello.
Hi. So I make a motion then that we approve the common vic killers license for Just Write Farm for the coming year.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
And I'm refusing.
Okay.
Okay. Next one is the liquor license. We have Plimpton Gas, Plimpton Convenience, and Upland Club, and they're all...
Yes, all ready to go.
Okay, everything's in order and...
Yes.
Okay.
Do you want to sign these now or do you want to wait till later? These I have, done.
I'll make a motion that we approve the renewal of the liquor licenses for Plimpton Gas, Plimpton Convenience, and Upland Club.
Okay, and the first two are, are they all all liquor? Or is it beer and wine for Plimpton Gas? I think they're...
Plimpton Gas is beer and wine.
Okay.
Okay, and Plimpton Convenience is all, correct?
It would be all.
Convenience is all. And the Upland...
Upland Club is all.
Is all.
Is all?
Okay.
Okay, that's, oh, that's what it is. So that's these, do you want to sign them now or later?
Sure.
Okay, so you made a motion to approve those three liquor licenses?
Yes. All those in favor?
I'll second.
Aye.
And I.
Aye. Thank you for keeping me straight.
All right. All right, so that's the wine and malt for Plimpton Convenience, right? Plimpton Gas.
And then if you could sign, this is the one that will go into the ABCC with the licenses that you'll be... I'm on the date of the meeting.
Just the top cover?
Just the top.
Okay.
So just to be clear, the Upland Club is a club license and all alcohol is to be consumed on the premises.
Exactly.
So you can't stop by there to get a...
And we have a license to be approved for the range permit for the Upland Club?
Yeah.
And that's as it's been in the past?
Yes. No, thank you.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we approve the Upland Club, Sportsman's Club right for a range permit.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye. They do a nice job with that.
Yes, they do.
And they've really come a long way with...
They are leading.
They're, right, oversight and, yeah.
Then we have the Class II, III, and scrap licenses. Why don't we do these individually? Albees?
I think Albees has both a Class II and a Class III.
They have a Class II, Class III, and a scrap.
Okay, they have all three then.
She left left.
They're all in accordance with past?
Yes.
Okay, I'll make a motion, make a motion that we approve Class II, III, and scrap licenses for Albees.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so you were going to sign, this is a little different. This is not tab. This is one.
Order question, is Albees now Angels?
No.
No.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Plimpton Cycles and Angels rent storefronts, but Albees doesn't have a storefront.
So I just signed the top.
Nope, you signed the second one too. That's the conditions.
Oh, I see.
Everybody knows that it is Albees.
There's two pages to sign here.
Okay.
This is Class II, there's two pages on that as well.
Junk license. Okay, so that's the Class III.
One will be the license and one is the conditions.
Okay, on the Class II?
Yes, it's on both.
So those are the conditions for the Class III?
Yes.
Class III, okay, so those are the conditions.
Scrap.
Which are the same conditions as the two.
Okay.
If you'd like to vote on Angels, you can, they just dropped this off.
Okay.
It is all here and then I can have you sign.
I'm okay with that. We'll sign after.
Yep.
And is that just Class II and III?
Nope, that's just a Class III.
Class III.
Excuse me. Ah, just Class II, I think. Class II.
Okay. So I make a motion on Angels towing that we approve a Class II license.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we'll sign afterwards.
We'll sign that after. We just come earlier today and they emailed.
This one says he's keeper of a shop.
You have motorsports.
Does he have a storefront? I've never been familiar with this one before.
Is it? Motorsports is a Class II.
Is there a question on that one, Christine?
I had a question on the junk dealer's license.
That's the scrap.
Right, but it says to be a dealer or, to dealer in or keeper of a shop for the purchase or sale or barter of, does he have a shop over there? That's what this is for.
Which one, Angels or Albees?
No, Albees.
But they do scrap out of it.
So does he sell scrap out of it?
I believe so.
And he's got established hours and all of that?
And Angels is managing it for him.
Okay.
And he came in August last week.
Okay.
But and they, Angels leases their place from Chris Larson.
Okay.
There's that, your licenses. Angels will be later.
Motorsports?
Motorsports, Class II license. There's two on that as well. I can pass you the whole folder on that.
And that's Class II?
Yes.
And just Class II.
Mm-hmm.
So I'll make a motion that we approve Class II license for Motorsports.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And this is, is this Tru's Corporation?
Yes.
Okay.
You have Brandon Berry, DBA, Plimpton Cycles.
Okay.
And that's a Class II.
I'll make a motion that we approve a Class II license for Brandon Berry doing business as Plimpton Cycles.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And there's two pages to that, did you see that?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's it.
And now we have Plimpton Sand and Gravel Corp. Mr. Norrie. Mr. Norrie.
And again, just the Class II?
Just the Class II, please.
So I'll make a motion that we approve a Class II license for Plimpton Sand and Gravel Corporation.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good, so we have.
So...
The other ones, so...
The Uptown, what are we doing there?
I haven't heard back. I'll send out a second.
To which one?
The Cafe Uptown.
Okay. But all the Class II, sir, well, actually...
And you have Plimpton Service and Competition Auto.
And Kerry's not doing one this year?
Oh, I'm sorry, and Kerry.
Okay.
I highlighted an up...
Kerry Competition...
Kerry Competition and Plimpton Service.
Are all outstanding. Okay.
Which ones are?
Kerry Competition and Plimpton Service.
Everything should be this, all right? I'll send out a second.
Yeah, you just may want to remind them that their licenses expire.
Even if I get them out, I'll beat stamp it in.
Okay.
And also the Cafe?
Oh, thank you.
So the Blue Moon Cafe?
Okay, and one Common Vittler? Or is that a Common Vittler?
Yes.
Okay.
It's really hard to...
If you give me the letter, I'll go up and talk to them.
Thank you.
And those are just notes that we, still got those outstanding.
Okay.
Okay.
This one, this...
We've got the assessors coming in at 6:30, maybe we want to just skip over the parking lot until they...
Okay. Let's just go here.
Maybe I'll do the grant writer discussion.
Okay.
Just quickly, after last meeting where you people said, "Go call." I did. The lady's name is Terry Walker. She is also the town clerk for the town of Monterey in Massachusetts. She was very excited about the opportunity of meeting with us. She has done other grants for other towns in the western part of the state. I think maybe, I told her I would call her after this meeting. She's willing to come out here and meet with us. She would have to stay overnight and I think we probably have to phone you. I thought maybe Liz and I could give her a conference call tomorrow. I'd just like to know a little bit more about what town she's done it for so we can maybe take a look and then arrange a date if that makes sense for you guys.
Sure does, yeah.
Would love to meet with her. Certainly, I guess we'd need to know what kind of remuneration she'd need.
Exactly.
And we'd need to know from whence that would come, but I love, I love someone with experience and a track record.
And what she's done, oh my gosh, it's amazing, amazing.
So we'll cross our fingers that this is something that's going to be worthwhile.
Yeah.
Yeah, probably some type of contract.
Any questions you might have that we should be asking? I mean, obviously, there's one, how do you get paid? How do we go through and orient her? Because there's so many. I will say, as I was telling her a little bit about the town, she was feeling off, "Oh, there's a grant over there, there's a grant over there." So I think with Liz and I talking, maybe she can spell out how we focus on, you know, so that we go after the low-hanging fruit.
Well, and are we doing that or would she do that? Are we paying her to find grants and write them?
I think so. That's, we have to discuss.
I mean, she'd be much more in tune with...
But I think we have to say, here's what we're doing in terms of a master plan, here's what we're doing with the police station, the fire department.
Right, I mean, you don't want to getting grants that really aren't helpful to the town.
She did say, she had a little feedback. She said, first of all, are we all in agreement? Because she said she worked for one town where there was one person opposed and it just destroyed the whole, you know, going after it. And she said there was another town where they actually got a million-dollar grant and they turned it down.
Really?
And she had to go back and say, "We're not going to follow up on this."
Okay.
And she said, "I don't want to be in that position again." Because obviously, she's got a reputation.
Oh, yeah, and all the time she would have put into it.
Yep.
Yeah, I think that's the importance of communicating what, you know, what we're looking for.
So the only other thing, I guess, is, especially if she's going to come out here and stay overnight, is just make sure we know exactly what she wants to see. I know she mostly wants to hear from us, but to her around town and if there's anything in particular...
We'll give her the usual.
Won't take that long.
What is her name?
How long does it take, Liz? An hour?
What is her name again?
Terry, T-E-R-R-Y, Walker. And she's town clerk for Monterey, Massachusetts, and the grant writer for Monterey.
I want to show her the parks.
Good.
I'm sure.
Good. So no snow, hopefully.
Okay. Okay.
Where do we want to go? We want to talk about utilization of the police department space?
I don't know if we have time, two minutes.
Yeah, but they're not here.
Liz suggested a survey, and I thought that was a good idea, that we go out and survey the boards and commissions to say, what, what ideas or plans do you have, if any?
Well, Mark and I were just quickly talking, I think we both would like to see a floor plan.
Yeah, I wonder if anyone has a floor plan, I haven't, I've never seen one.
I tried to track one down, and I haven't been able to find one.
Even a rudimentary, just kind of a layout, because I believe they have a kitchen in there, a working kitchen.
They do, it's kind of like a little maze.
We could almost make one, I mean.
Yeah, just to kind of have an idea, and, right, how much space we're talking about, and I think there's access from the hallway as well, isn't there?
Yes.
Okay.
I was totally impressed with how cool that space could be, I mean, it has that flavor of the old townhouse, an old schoolhouse.
The cell.
A what?
The cell.
Would be a really nice police station up there, you know.
It's going to take some work, though, and it's chopped up.
It is chopped up, unfortunately, but boy, it, it has a whole bunch of character, and I, I kind of fits with the town, and.
So maybe we should be up there?
Yeah.
Open up this meeting room to.
But I think we're not going to get too far in planning until, until we, until we do a floor plan.
Yeah, I agree.
So floor plan first. Do you want to move forward with at least coming up with a draft survey, or do we not think that's a good idea? I was just wondering if it made sense to figure out who's actually interested in the space, even if we put something on there that essentially says, you know, the final decision does rest with the Board of Selectmen as far as placement, but that any requests, we'll try our best to honor those, and.
And we're very preliminary in the.
This is all very preliminary, but just to get kind of a general pulse of what's going on, and.
I might order not as a request, but as suggestions.
Okay.
Otherwise, if it's a request, it's going to be just that narrow view of, you know, what each of the committees and boards want.
So if they have any suggestions.
Yeah, we have space up there, it's going to be cool space, and, yeah, suggestions.
Okay, I like that approach better, it leaves it a little more open-ended, too, and I think we'd give the board more leeway.
I have a floor plan of that on my wall.
Really?
That would be good. And I think there's outside access, too, out back, isn't there?
Yes, you can access throughout back.
Okay.
You can access it also through the Assessor's office.
Okay.
Because they were using the handicap ramp for one of their board members.
Okay.
To come through, but I have a floor plan.
Great.
For, it was for fire.
Was it framed?
No, I just have it on my wall, like, this is where you are in the building.
Oh, if we could get copies, if you can scan it to everybody, that would be great.
I think the police station's on that, it just tells you that you're here.
Okay.
So if you had to escape for a fire, you know where to go.
You know, the other places, maybe we should check with the fire department, too, they may have a more expanded.
If you check with them, I should also, I mentioned it to, to them downstairs just briefly, but let me touch base with Kathy again. She's pretty good at getting her hands on different things when you need them.
I think the survey would be good, because I'm getting mixed messages from people, some saying, "No, we want to go," and then others saying, "No, we don't want to go," and at least we.
Me, too.
Get it cleared up. Okay.
Good.
So where's our friends from?
So you are going to go ahead with the survey of suggestions?
Well, before I send anything to anyone, I'll send it to the board first, in case you have suggestions for rewording it.
Okay.
I want to make sure that we're asking what, the information that we need.
Excellent. What was that?
Fire Department Administration.
I think they have there some plans already for the station.
They usually do for the buildings, yeah.
That'll be some nice space.
Well, we might as well stop parking lot, just, we'll stop when they come in.
Okay.
Can you throw that up, Liz, on the screen? Oh, you got it, okay.
Perfect.
Who does have it? Can you access it on the way in?
Okay.
Okay.
This is the map of the building.
Oh, neat.
Okay.
Oh, that's great.
Oh, that's good.
Wow, great. Yeah. Can you make copies for each of us?
Yes.
Thanks, very much, that's terrific.
I had it done when they did the, when we had the flood, the pipe bursts and the Protection One came in.
Yep.
So we got a.
Okay.
Terrific.
Perfect.
Well, hello.
You bailed us out again.
Meet again.
You bailed us out again.
I'm trying it.
Do you want to stand, is it easier just to stand?
Or do you want to sit, whatever's, whatever's more comfortable for you guys? Okay.
Okay.
All right.
So, so good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
We, the Board of Assessors, or, or two thirds of our board, are here today, we need to revisit the, the tax classification hearing. And the reason for this is because there was a minor, there was a minor change in the values of the residential class. However, the regulations of the Department of Revenue do require us to have another hearing, although it can be abbreviated hearing, we don't need to go through the whole, the whole process of, we just need to explain why we need a signature on a, on a new recap sheet. And so essentially, I'm not sure if I have the exact number, so essentially, the, the issue is that the value of the residential class changed to about $100,000, it's in, it's in column D. Do they have copies of the form that we're going to give them?
I emailed them copies, but I left the original for them to sign here, so, so the increase was 161,000 in the residential side, which dropped the tax rate a penny, so that's good, and it's a DOR requirement that we have to.
So the meeting was posted and published in the newspaper, as required for, for tax classification meetings, and so that's pretty much it, nothing else has changed, the resident, residential factor is still one, we haven't adopted a split rate, or a small commercial exemption, so other than that, we just need your approval, and we'll be all done.
Well, should we do this, where we open the tax classification hearing again, is that, was this posted in the paper?
They had to advertise it, yes.
Okay, so we should probably open the hearing again, to make it official?
Just to make it formal.
You want to do that?
Yeah, sure, do we, you have the notice that went in the paper?
I can go grab it, I didn't bring it down, let me go grab it.
Okay, thank you.
Anyway, so, if we're going to reopen, if we're going to reopen it, let, might as well just go through the, the basic, the basic facts here, that, that we, that we have a residential factor of one, which means that all property in all classes are taxed like in town of Plimpton, that we have not granted a discount to open space, we have not granted a residential exemption, or a small, or a small commercial exemption, and essentially, we're, and we have recommended a split, a, I'm sorry, a single rate, that means all properties in this, in town are treated the same, whether they're industrial, commercial, residential, or, or, or the, residential, open space, there is no open space, but commercial, industrial, with the classifications, and anyway, unless the Board of Selectmen wishes to readdress or change any of those decisions made in the previous tax classification hearing we held back in November, the only thing, the only reason why we're here, for the benefit of the viewers, is that the, is the classification, I mean, the value of the residential classification was increased slightly, as Ms. Jones indicated a few minutes ago.
So the tax rate is a penny less than the previous year?
That would be correct.
That sounds good.
That is very good.
That sounds nice.
That's because, you know, the, the rate increased slightly, so the benefit, there's more to go around.
Thank you, Wendy, very much.
Thanks, Wendy.
Okay. All right, so I'll make a motion that we open the tax classification as, hearing as published in the Halifax Plimpton Express, and this was posted, looks like 12/14, did it ran, last Friday? Yeah, I think last Friday, that it ran, running 12/14. A public hearing on tax classification will be held Monday, December 17, 2018, at 6:30 PM in the Selectmen's Meeting Room at the Townhouse. The open meeting hearing will focus on the local property tax burden among the five property classes, residential, open space, commercial, industrial, and personal property for fiscal year 2019. The public hearing requires a vote by the Board of Selectmen for allocation of property tax classification. The Board of Assessors will provide supporting data relevant to the fiscal effects of available alternatives. After the hearing, the Board of Assessors will submit the recap sheet to the Massachusetts Department of Revenue for approval of the tax rate for fiscal year 2019.
I'll second.
All right, so we're now officially, the tax classification has been opened, can we just vote to reaffirm what we voted regarding all of those decisions that are last?
I believe, I believe so, those, that, that hearing was matter of public record, I believe you can, which I've just gone over, that essentially, single rate, no, no exemptions adopted. And yes, I think we just necessarily vote to reaffirm the results of the previous one. Is that sound right?
Yeah, with a factor of one.
With a factor of one?
Yep.
Okay, can we see all of those? I mean, do we need to spell it out, that we're reaffirming the votes with a factor of one? Perfect, okay. Okay, so I'll make a motion that we reaffirm our votes taken at the last tax classification hearing, which was in, what, November?
Yes.
November 19, thank you. And the, we are choosing the residential factor of one. The, there will be no discount granted to open space, no residential exemption was adopted, no exemption for small commercial, and that, I think those, that was pretty much it, wasn't it? Okay.
So I'll second the motion.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Awesome. Great, thank you.
You're to sign the bottom, the second page.
Okay. This John needs to sign it?
Um, all three.
Okay.
So where do I sign?
In this page.
Second page, yeah, on your right hand.
Oh, just anywhere in here?
Anywhere on the bottom.
Okay. So that's great news, that the tax rate is reduced by a penny.
It was worth holding another hearing.
Absolutely. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Very much. All right, so now I'll make a motion that we close the tax classification hearing.
I'll second it.
All right.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kristen.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, guys. Okay, back to the parking lot. So we talked about the town owned land disposition process, so I think that one we've pretty well taken care of. Master plan for the town campus. Do we have some date when they're going to feed us back the information based on, you know, they came in, surveyed us?
It should be just before or just after the New Year. I talked with Lisa Sullivan from Old Colony Planning Council just last week, and she was putting some finishing touches on it, and said that she should have something to us right around the New Year. I did reiterate to her that one of our biggest issues here is the parking situation, and I went over with her how we're, we are doing the separate entrance for the police department to make sure that she had the most up-to-date information, and Dan Pallada and Rob Tedesco, that works for him, they were very helpful, they got her a little schematic that she was looking for.
Okay, great.
So she'll make sure that she speaks to some of that in the final document.
Based on your email, I went over and took a, had Pat walk me through the, the building, really looks great. I was surprised how much land there is between here and the building, the police department. I mean, there's plenty of room for parking, so we have a good opportunity. I did try to run my idea of maybe making it one way around, and I didn't get a big reception to that.
You know what's good, though? Mark pointed out earlier today that the embankment out this way, if you were going to drive up and park kind of behind the trailer, he had noticed that the land was disturbed there, so I checked with Dan Pallada, and it is part of the project plans, the scope of work for out back, they're actually going to widen the roadway that's out behind this building to about 20 feet or so, and then they'll properly grade that embankment.
There's a pole right there, though, are they going to move that?
I assume so, I would think that they'd have to, to widen it out that much.
Yeah, yeah, well, that's good.
But they'll widen it out, and then they'll put down low man seed and everything.
The other thing is, there's a lot of land on the backside of the police station that's flat.
Right.
I thought it just fell off, but it doesn't, it's fairly flat, so there's a lot of room to do some things there. Okay, great. Technology master plan, did I skip one?
The town pavement plan.
Town pavement. Where are we on that? Did, did we do that?
I think Scott was going to talk with a consultant about a pavement management plan, I think he had spoken to one already, so he was talking about getting him in.
He thought he could use Chapter 90 money to possibly do that, yeah.
Right, so I, I can follow up with him.
Yeah, maybe have him come in and update us sometime in the New Year. The technology master plan, and that's kind of the next one also, the new server upgrade and the email addresses, it's, it's been a long time coming.
It has, so right now, the fire chief is the only one so far that's on the new server, and that's successful now, he is set up, so he's at plimpton town.org.
So that's the new address, okay?
Yes.
Can we get Michael to give us some dates when?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
I think it needs to be an all or nothing type thing, so at first, he thought he could just sort of slowly put in the email addresses onto the new server, and then we had a communications issue when he put the fire chief on and activated him, he couldn't send, or, he couldn't send emails to us on the old server, or receive our emails, so he had to then delete all the addresses that he had added to the new one. I don't know, that's not, it's a little outside my.
Yeah, okay.
My area.
So we'll get Michael in, and we'll see if we can nail him down on that. The lady at the end of the.
I'm sorry.
Town administrator.
Town administrator.
No, no, that's a.
We call her Todd now.
Evaluate and formalize board's goals and objectives, guess, how are we going to do that? How are we going to approach that? We need a meeting to just, that's, that's a big.
Should we each come up with three goals or objectives, and just bounce them around off each other at the next meeting?
Okay, I've got four already, so.
Okay, so four, that's it.
Okay, why don't we plan on doing that?
Okay, good.
And then we'll set our goals.
I, I bet you we'll end up pretty.
I think so, probably overlap, yeah.
On the same page, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, and then we can talk about, as a part of that, what the next steps is to sort of take it down into the little more granular.
Make it happen.
Yeah.
So that'll be at the next meeting?
Yes. Coordinate and manage green communities grant, is that done now?
No, it's not, the work is still underway, a majority of the projects have been completed, they just started work over at the fire station to install the heaters, which they're very excited about, that's, that's a good project, it was much needed. I'm still trying to work with them on the invoicing piece, I was really hopeful that we would have enough invoices from them that the state could release the next couple dispersments of funding.
Right.
I have a meeting that I'm going to be participating in tomorrow morning to try to.
Okay, great.
Nail down some of this stuff.
I mean, you've done a great job of getting that.
Absolutely.
And the lighting is terrific, from what I've seen around the buildings.
It's gone well, all things considered, there are some things that I would do a little bit differently, maybe next time around, but at this stage, I just want to see this stuff wrapped up, and hopefully, if the state can get us our money quick enough, then we'd be eligible to apply in February for the next round.
Great.
From what I understand, that's not all that common, that most towns, it takes them like a full year to kind of complete all the work, but I just assume apply for more if we can.
Sure, absolutely, yeah, that's great. Main Street Ring Road intersection, that one's going to be, you know, was a little contentious last time, we need to address it, though, we've got it, because the road system around there is getting beat up, and I think one of the things we've got to do is find out what it would cost to move a pole. Jim has always said in the past that, that the expense of moving a pole was too much, a couple of hundred thousand dollars. I, I can't imagine it would cost that. And if we could move the pole, then we could probably change the design of the island a little bit, but if we can't move the pole, we're almost forced to cut off that edge on the, on the curve.
I would really like to revisit it, I didn't like that plan at all.
Okay. So we need Scott to come in, but before he comes in, ask him if he'll check and find out exactly what it would cost to move the pole.
Okay.
I assume Verizon can give us a estimate, and then at least that will have some idea.
Yeah, I mean, I wonder if we could even get, like, Old Colony Planning Council to take a look at the intersection and come up with some ideas, or some other consultant to have some possible solutions, and I can't believe we couldn't do like a mini roundabout And I can't believe we couldn't do like a mini roundabout there, maybe with a low rotary that public safety could drive over, but something to better control the traffic pattern and the speed. So I don't know if that's the best way to go, though, is to ask them to see if they could take a look at the intersection and come up.
They are really good with stuff like that.
Yeah, I mean, it's a small scope, and just to see if they have some ideas, how best we could control traffic.
I'm sure you, Mark, got an earful as I did the other night when we were at the bond there.
Oh, I miss the earful.
Oh, I got an earful.
They just need to slow down.
Well, yeah, and that's it. It needs to be some type of traffic calming alternative.
Speed limits is part of that, too. I mean, that would really help if there was something like that.
I think that's an integral part of it. The board did give me permission to speak to town council, and actually Greg got back to me right away. I'm just trying to digest that information and then get back to him.
Okay.
He wasn't terribly encouraging, but I just, I feel like there's some way that we should have more control.
There's got to be a way.
And I think in the interlude over the holidays, I'll have a chance to digest that and get back to him. Because I think that's a large part of the answer. I mean, in the long run, it's actually the most cost-effective answer is just having people slow down.
Exactly, yeah. Okay, great. I threw on this one, the illuminating of the townhouse street entrance, because I can't see the entrance at night.
It's so hard to see.
I don't, I don't know. Is that Scott? Do we give it to him and say, fix it?
I think we might have to. I had tried going the route of the wiring inspector, and I also mentioned it to Steve. But we would need, even if we do solar, we'll need some sort of wiring. So I'm wondering if we should get Scott involved, or maybe check with the electrician who's on our contacts list and see what we would need to do. Obviously, you need some sort of wiring mechanism.
Would it make sense for Old Colony Planning to look at that, or is that too small? Is that a, you know...
Could we include something like that in that master plan? Some type of illumination of the townhouse, that entrance?
I think we could, but my assumption is that they would just know in the document that they would be lighting at the end, preferably solar.
What about green communities?
If we, so that's the interesting part with that. If you had a light down there, they could make it more energy efficient. But if you don't have it currently, that's why we couldn't apply for anything at the new police station. Because I had said, well, do we want to make it very efficient while it's being built, so you don't have to go back? But the whole idea, I guess, is like retrofitting.
Okay, all right.
So...
Okay.
Okay.
So maybe we end up needing, at worst, a town meeting article for a short-term solution until we fix the whole parking law. Because we've been batting this around forever.
It's terrible.
And just, if it's going to cost a couple thousand dollars, we might as well just get the money and do it.
Do it, okay.
I'm with you. Solve the sound recording issues. Well, that's been addressed by Richard from Cable Access. So I think that's, I think he said he'd be back in the first part of January to talk to us. Great. That was part of going live also. Volunteer recognition. I think we kind of got this on hold. We've got a lot of things going on. It's a question of where we put this.
But it is important.
It is.
Because volunteers are what keep us going.
It sure is. I just don't have a quick idea of how to proceed right now.
Well, I mean, even if we just had, announced everybody at town meeting, had people stand up and give them a round of applause, something. We need to recognize our volunteers.
Yeah, what if at town meeting, besides recognizing a bunch of them, if each year we acknowledged a champion for the year?
I think that'd be great.
They used to do that through the Plimpton Historical Society, or it was the guy in Club of the Kind, I can't remember which, maybe it was both. There'd be a meeting in the year. I know, remember Susan Ossoff one time was champion and others.
I mean, that sort of introduces the subject and get the idea out there that there is some recognition and some glory in all the work.
I know.
What if we put in the town report? Doesn't need a page, and the town report are people who've served 10 years, five years.
Oh, like a champion, this year's champion in the annual town report.
We could do that.
The problem is, though, if we leave anybody out, you know.
Yeah, I think you're right, but that might not work. But if we did a page of everybody over 10 years, everybody that's been five years, list all of their names.
That would be good. Or what if we created a little spot here, like on one of the bulletin boards, and we did like one person a month and have their picture taken? And do like a little spotlight on them, like a little bit about them.
That's neat.
Nothing's jumping out at anybody.
No, she, she who proposes do.
We could write a bio about you, put a little, your picture up there and a little something about you.
Before I kick off, you mean?
Yeah, that's neat. That's a neat idea.
That's a good idea.
I want to see that.
Something, like maybe they could give some little facts about themselves.
I mean, I wonder if we could even do something in the paper where we recognize a volunteer, like, once a month or something.
Right.
We have about 60, though.
We've got a lot, yeah.
And that's not counting CASA or Boy Scouts or Girl Scouts or...
Yeah.
It's just town boards and...
Are you strictly limiting this to the boards and committees in the townhouse, though?
I don't think so, but I'm not sure. That's why it's sort of up there.
I don't know. It's pretty widespread if we're digging into CASA and PAYS and all of those, too.
Maybe for some of those, you could just identify the organization and what they do and who the members are. Or let them write something about themselves so that they can kind of go back into their own history and...
It's too bad we couldn't have a picture of like the PAYS volunteers in the annual report, and then another one for the guy.
Why couldn't we?
You know, just go all the way through and put all the organizations.
Why, yeah, why couldn't we?
This report's pretty extensive now, so...
Yeah, but it doesn't have to be huge. You can split pages and just...
Yeah, it could have more than one on a page.
Yeah, right. With their, because they do a report for the annual report. They write something up, don't they?
Indeed. Get that report.
All right, well, maybe just do a picture.
It's not some nasty email.
God.
If you don't write one, you'll be the only one.
Well, why don't we leave that one on and figure out a plan?
Okay, yeah. The town flag policy, I think we agreed that we'd, next spring, we'd put up flags between the green, from the green to the Old Townhouse.
Right.
And you mentioned maybe putting...
That we were going to do them on the poles, right?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, and maybe the Deborah Sampson flag, too?
Yeah, we'll throw in some Deborah Sampsons and some US.
I have some Deborah Sampson flags.
Great.
Perfect.
And Roxanne, the veterans agent, donated a new flag for the town green.
Oh, very nice.
Because it...
Good, excellent. And then we have our things that we, you know, they're just out there. I haven't heard anything on Carver.
No, I haven't heard anything on Carver either. I think it is progressing, but they've been, the last that I saw, that they were very aware of Plimpton residents and that they were really trying to accommodate their needs with lighting placement and parking on the buildings and trying to configure docks so that the backup alarms weren't affecting them. So they really had done a nice job with addressing our concerns.
That's great.
So it looks like it's, you know, moving, but they have addressed our concerns.
It's come a long ways from when we first started out there, so great.
Sure has.
Yeah. Rocky Harvest, I don't know that there's any issue there right now.
I haven't heard any complaints about them not being in compliance with the terms. And the last incident, I spoke with Ed Rose. He assured me it would not happen again, and as far as I know, it has not. So I think we're in good shape.
Solar projects, nothing going on, right?
No, not right now.
Okay. Shared service, I guess that kind of fell off when we went with the fire chief. I guess if, if there's opportunities, we'll try to address them.
And keeping on the radar, shared talent planner, town planner pieces. I mean, that keeps coming up more and more, especially from building and master planning.
I hear that, too.
Maybe after we get the master plan, that'll come up all the more.
I think the, part of the issue there is, though, how do we solve it by using funds from people who are coming in wanting to do development in town? So that it's not just the town ponying.
Through fees and break.
Absolutely.
The Bennett Water Treatment, I thought that was done. I left it on there, but isn't it complete?
Uh, I don't know. We should probably reach out to John Wilhamsen.
I thought it was done, but there may have been sort of an outlier test result that they got from something. So I think they were, to be continued.
Okay.
Okay, maybe you can check with him. Sometimes he's around.
I will. I'll follow up with him. We had a discussion a couple weeks back.
Great. Okay. Moving on to board goals quickly. Economic development, I think it's kind of in abeyance right now. I wish we could get John Norrie to speak to, but hopefully that'll happen at some point. We did go over and meet with Cisco as part of the assessment. And it's kind of interesting that they have a lot of land.
They have an awful lot of land, yeah.
Awful lot of land, so it'd be nice if they were to enlarge. Financial management, the budget's started, so I think that's where it's going to shake out, is how we go through and...
Are you getting responses yet from boards and committees?
Yes.
Are there ones that need to be reminded of the deadline?
I can send something else out at some point.
Just because we're coming up to the holidays and...
I'll send a reminder. I was going to send maybe two reminders. Like maybe one this week and then one just after the new year.
Great.
Public safety?
Buildings movement along, still on budget and...
It's going to be a fabulous-looking building.
I think that building's going to be fabulous. I'm even more excited about the old building, right? That's class and style up there.
We're going to put you in jail.
Yeah, like the jail.
Yeah, we could do it as a fundraiser.
Oh, get a selectman out of jail.
Who might not raise anymore?
I know. You better take your lunch.
Grants, we've talked about, I think, too. Volunteerism, the same thing, and technology. Correspondence and administrator updates.
So for correspondence, I just wanted to note that I had authorized up to one hour with legal counsel for the Open Space Committee regarding a smart development bylaw. I don't know if Mark...
Yeah, Open Space is looking at the possibility of putting together a bylaw for local subdivision control and doing that for the planning board. And they're going to reach out to various towns and look at their bylaws. But I had suggested that maybe it'd be worthwhile for just spending a few minutes with town council to see if they had a particular town or a town's bylaw. So I was just asking for really under a half hour with town council, just to help out on that. It's, it's actually a big project, but Open Space is pretty dedicated to see if they can get that done in time for town meeting.
That would be fantastic.
I mean, the smart development piece, I mean, it's tricky. It doesn't limit the amount of houses, but it just makes it much better where there are developments, that there's a clustering and a lot of open space. And it just, as the name implies, it's just smart development.
Sounds like a great idea. So do you, do you need a half hour, or did we already vote it?
I had authorized it because you had given me the bank of hours.
Yeah, great, great.
She was very generous. Thank you.
She's good, though.
She is.
Okay.
We also had the latest issue of the Plimpton Halifax Express. There was a very nice picture in there and a little snippet for the South Shore Ballet Theater. There were three sisters from Plimpton who all performed in The Nutcracker last weekend.
Very nice.
So that was very nice. And there were more tales of old Plimpton.
The ballet was last week, last...
Yes.
Wow, check that out.
It was at Bayer Academy, I believe, in Ridgeway. For my updates, the flag dedication for the flag that was donated in memory of the victim of that accident for right out front here, that flag. I spoke with the fire department. They've been in touch with the family. And we're thinking maybe just after the holidays, we would do something. But I think that area in general, we should also look at when we're talking about master plan and everything. Because the landscaping over there has somewhat eroded away.
Yes.
And it's, it needs some help over there.
Yeah.
I already went over the budget stuff, green communities we talked about. So Elise Lyons is helping the fire chief pursue a grant with a very fast approaching deadline. The deadline is this Friday.
Oh, wow.
And I put the two of them in touch this past Friday. And she's really fantastic. She stepped right up. She met with the chief today, came in here to meet with me on a few things. And she is off and running and very determined to help them with this grant application.
Is this for the exhaust?
No, this is for a smart board with that program on it. I think it's called combust. It's the one that they use at a lot of fire departments, but Middleborough in particular, that you can actually take pictures of structures in town and then have a simulated scene, basically, where you would depict who responds first and where you park the apparatus, all of that. So it'd be a great training tool, I think, for people. So the deadline for that is Friday, and she's hard at work with that. The exhaust system, though, it's back out to bid. Responses are due January 3rd for that. And that'll be a much-needed installation anyway, because I understand that the state has gone OSHA compliant, which I believe takes effect in early 2019. So we'll need that anyway. And then my last update was just that I did forward around the update from legal counsel on any pending litigation and that kind of thing. So if you have any questions about it or think anything's missing from it, let me know, and I can get in touch with counsel and find out the status.
There was a typo on it.
Were there?
There were several, actually.
Yeah.
I just looked at mine electronically. When I see stuff in paper, though, then my...
Yeah, it jumps out, it, yeah. They had an address that said Central Street. Where's Central Street in Plimpton? I was hoping it wasn't us. Maybe they billed us for something that wasn't ours.
So I think this, this may be my rave, but I really appreciate it having the update and knowing where we're at on it.
I think we were long overdue for it.
They should do that quarterly.
And doing that quarterly or...
Right.
Just so we know.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you. Dates to remember. Board of Selectmen, open meeting at 6:00 PM on January 7th and January 28th. That's because of Martin Luther King Day in between?
Yes.
Okay. And then obviously, the townhouse is closed for Christmas and New Year's, right?
New Year's Day.
Yeah, okay. Okay. Go on to minutes? I got, you sent out a lot of minutes. I was unclear. There were some November meetings that are still open. Is that...
I think 11/5, 11/10, closer to the last week. You don't have it?
No, I do.
Oh, okay, yes, they were updated just...
So I guess we'll take the oldest one first. The problem I have is I can't remember things back then. I think, you know, going forward, if you could do them the next morning, first thing, just make that the priority while it's still fresh. Because when I get these, one, I'm a little dyslexic, and two, I can't hardly remember my own name at times. But I do think, I do think we've got to get them up. And the other part of that should be, no, I guess they have to come to us first for approval before they can post it. Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Do you want to take a stab, because you know...
I did have quite a few changes, but I can't get the dang thing to open. Dang it. No, I don't have the COX login. It's saying I need the COX login.
COX?
COX, C-O-X, COX.
It used to be in the Plimpton Town East or Town East.
Yeah, I don't know why it wouldn't open.
Bring it up on the network.
All right, can I see your copy, Mark?
Yeah, sure. There's the file.
Okay, all right. So just at the very beginning, you've got Town Administrator, TA, and then Elizabeth Liz. So I would stick with just one for her, either Liz or TA.
Ta.
Ta-ta?
Ta.
I think we're going with Ta.
Okay.
She's not Ta-ta. You little things.
Okay, and I don't think it was a dog nuisance hearing. I think it was just a dog hearing.
Was it a nuisance dog hearing?
That's closer to it, but you... That's closer to it, but the trouble is, they can be called a nuisance. I think they can be called dangerous. And the hearing was to sort out which of those it was. So maybe just a dog hearing makes more...
Dog hearing, okay.
Or a dog complaint hearing, maybe.
Okay, let's... Why don't we do that, dog complaint? Dog hearings, okay.
Do you want a future? Hopefully you don't have any, but just to be called dog hearing?
Opposition, and a second further. Yeah, why don't we just call it dog hearings, just so it... Because we're not sure whether they're dangerous or a nuisance yet. To be determined by the hearing. All right, come on, Stephen. All right. All right, just a little wordsmithing here under... When we met with Tom Milius, I would just say, made motion to support the fees as presented. Not in favor. I just said motion to support. So I would just get rid of that. And you may wanna take a look at that one. I don't know if you had any...
I read it over.
You're okay with that?
I'm okay with it.
Okay.
Yes.
All right.
Before we leave that, I just think we had a wordsmith where it says, "Two Brooks Preserve will continue fundraising..."
Oh, yes.
"...initiatives" or something like that.
Yes, I agree, that John Traynor and Linda Letty attended the closing on the Atwood property. I would say something about the Atwood property will now be known as the Two Brooks Preserve and the town will continue fundraising, something like that?
Sure.
That ties the two together?
Sure.
Okay. All right.
I'll use your copy then?
Yep, so I'll write that one out. Now, the contract for the gazebo was awarded to Lundie Construction. Now, was that because the low bidder was not qualified?
The low bidder dropped out.
Okay, so should we say that, because the low bidder dropped out, or would just leave it at awarded to Lundie Construction?
Let's add that.
Okay.
You wanna add that?
Okay.
Okay.
Because the low bidder... Low bidder... Withdrawn. Perfect. Okay. Planning Board Recommendation, Edward Gallahan, first of open session. Okay, I think that was pretty much it that I had.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes of November the 5th as amended.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Why don't you second them, and that way they can...
Yeah, it'll make it easier. Now, the...
Didn't you like how John tried to open the meeting?
Yes, that was awesome!
I did notice that, but I didn't wanna say.
I needed to bring that up to your attention.
The Two Brooks Preserve. Brooks Preserve. All right, so there's that one. Okay, all right, so let's see.
So November 19th.
Okay.
My concerns were formatting, and I think we ended up with a cut and paste thing, and I corrected this at the bottom.
Oh, yeah, there was some duplication here, too. Yeah, okay.
So I made a note that, yeah, we were gonna take out the ta on this, or one of the tas. This word was recommendation down here near the bottom.
Right.
When we got to talking about closing, it's closing the evidentiary part of the hearing, and I made those corrections. And then there are a couple duplicated bullets that I crossed out.
Okay.
And those were the things that I had. My big chance to say duplicative bullets.
Duplicative, darn it! You know, when are you gonna get a chance to say that again?
Finally got to use that word.
Drats. Foiled again. Okay, so... So we didn't make a motion that the dog be permanently restrained?
Previous page, that's a double. It's... Here it is.
Made a motion that the dog is in violation of being a nuisance and disturbing the peace. Will draft a letter to Mr. Gazola with the findings and orders.
Yeah.
So just that, and, okay, okay.
And previously, I think it notes that...
The BOS ordered to have the dog, Mandy, be kept under direct control and supervision of the owner, being leashed or muzzled at all times when outside. I thought it was just muzzled when it was off-leash. When it was off-leash on their property.
No, I think there's an or in there, that the dog be under deep direct control.
At all times when outside.
Supervision, either being leashed or muzzled.
Okay. Okay. All right. Oh, okay. I wasn't sure if this was actually the opposite. Highway Superintendent Scott Ripley reported his findings to the BOS that outlined speed limits are not allowed for business in thickly settled areas. I thought they were allowed.
Yeah, they were allowed.
Okay, so they are allowed.
But it's thickly settled, you have really...
Or business-owned. Gotcha, okay.
Yeah.
All right, so Ann Soboluski. Okay, I think that's all that I had. Did you have anything else there, John?
Down on the second page, wherever.
Town Administrator update?
The new server is ready, and...
And she will be meeting?
We've got two wills in there.
Okay. The new server is ready, and will she... Okay, and she will be meeting with the IT specialists. Okay, perfect. Okay. So you wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of November 19th as amended.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Does that say evidentiary portion of the hearing?
Yes.
That sounds great.
Next minutes are...
They're all from 12-3.
So we have...
I thought those looked okay.
Meeting with the Middleborough Board of Selectmen. I thought, I didn't see anything.
That's...
That's marked. That's marked, so we have three minutes from the 12th, or of 12-3.
Do you wanna do the Middleborough ones first?
So there's, that's Middleborough.
Okay. All right, so this is the meeting with the Middleborough Board of Selectmen.
So I would make a motion that we approve it as written.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That's the executive session, which I guess we can approve if it's all right.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Yeah, I would make a motion that we approve the executive session minutes of December 30, December 3rd as written.
Okay, I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Actually, I don't know if you wanna hold on to those. Okay?
And that can go out.
Okay.
And that's the...
The meeting here. Yeah, I thought these looked good. I didn't have any... Just the removal of Liz for, yeah, after ta.
I don't get it.
Otherwise, I think we should all have two abbreviations. They'll be like, "Who said that?" Sometimes she's Liz, sometimes she's TA.
International woman of mystery.
Exactly, exactly.
Just don't tell me that's international woman of mystery. That's IWM?
IWM, or IWM for short.
Wow.
I would make a motion that we approve the December 3rd minutes as amended.
All right, I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye. And we're current. Yay! Thank you very much.
Okay. Rants and raves. Anybody wanna go first?
Yeah, I'll go first. I participated in the tree lighting on last Sunday. Really nice. Jill Palansteine did a really nice job putting it together. Fire Department was awesome, getting Santa to the green. And one of Santa's helpers, I think, helped light the tree, our volunteer who does everything and who happens to live on the green. But, yeah, it was really well-attended, nice carols. The Historical Society was there with a hot chocolate tent, and it was. It was a really nice time. Really got me in the spirit, and I didn't feel like I was as prepared as I should have been, but it was, it was a nice time.
Great.
Great job to Jill Palansteine and CASA and PAYS and the Historical Society for putting that together. I'm sure it was a lot of work, and they did a nice job.
Yeah, great energy right now.
Well, mine really was the KMP update. I really appreciate that, and I guess the rest of it is just to elaborate on yours. Thank you so much for emceeing that and all the events, public and private, that are going on that makes Plimpton feel really like Plimpton. It's cool.
I have kind of two raves. One is Karen Foy gave us the photos that are now installed. Christine Kelly, I think, started the initiative to get those up, and I think it looks great.
I'm gonna take a look when I, after the meeting.
Did we send a letter to her, to Karen?
So I sent Karen something, and she's available on January 28th if we wanted to. I thought maybe we could recognize her if we make a meeting.
Very nice, very nice.
Interestingly enough, she did not take all of the photos. She was quick to give credit to where it was due. I guess she ran almost like a little poll on Plimpton helping Plimpton and asked people to turn in photos.
Oh, okay.
And then she kind of went through and took the 12 and had the idea with Christine Kelly. So some of those were hers, but not all of them. So I told her that we would make sure when we do the recognition. I think on the 28th of January, we had said that we'll make sure that we make it known that there were other residents who also contributed.
Good.
Very nice.
Very nice. The other rave is for, our fire department is really awesome. The yearly thing they do where they have Santa Claus and Mrs. Santa Claus go around, and they put out a schedule, and they stop at each... So they go to the Historical Society, and they have it right programmed. Do you know the denit and what street they're gonna be on? And they put on 108 pitches on Facebook today.
Oh, how neat.
Showing the kids and the parents out there, waiting for the fire engine to come.
Do we like that on our page?
Yes.
We do? Okay, good. Very neat.
It really is, and kudos to them. They do a great job. So unless there's some other business, I would make a motion that we close the December 3rd Selectmen's meeting.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Happy holidays, everyone.
Yeah, Merry Christmas. Happy holidays.